Good morning. Good morning all, and welcome to a special meeting of the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. Today's Thursday, February 6th. Joined by the Honorable Gil Fedeo from CD1. Thank you for being here. And we're here at the Board of Public Works Ed Royball Hearing Room to discuss a very important issue: our failing sidewalks. Our sidewalks, as we know it, as we know them, are in terrible condition. An estimated 4,600 miles, nearly 40 percent, are in disrepair, and the cost to fix them is over a billion dollars. Short of a natural disaster, a billion-dollar problem doesn't just appear overnight. It's a product of four decades of a disingenuous policy whereby the city took legal responsibility for massive expenditure without ever figuring out how to pay for it. That was back in 1973. However, the real root of this problem goes back a century where, when the opening of the L.A. Aqueduct fueled decades of rapid growth, real estate developers planted trees like the ficus that grew rapidly. As the trees grew, their roots began uplifting sidewalks, causing angry homeowners who were receiving notices to repair the damage, the petition to council members to change the law and make the city responsible. The problem is, we've never backed up that ordinance with the necessary funds to carry it out. And we're not going to solve this problem today, but will at least make some forward progress after hearing the recommendation from city staff. With that, let's read item number one into the record, Michael.
Okay. Item number one is a joint report from bureaus of street services, engineering, contract administration, and the city administrative officer relative to the options for a sidewalk reconstruction program.
And I'm going to hear the card. We have one speaker card on this item. If I can bring up Deborah Murphy. Welcome, and thank you for being here. Do you have any other cards, Mr. Clerk? Morning.
I'm Deborah Murphy. I'm the executive director and founder of Los Angeles Walks, a pedestrian advocacy organization, and I also serve as the City of Los Angeles Pedestrian Advisory Committee Chair for the last 16 years. I'm here today to support repairing our sidewalks so we can create safe streets, safe, accessible, fun, and equitable streets. Sidewalks are a fundamental part of our transportation system. The limited sidewalk repair plan to allocate $10 million for sidewalks damaged by street trees and where claims have been filed is a start, but we have a long way to go to making our streets safe and a vital part of our communities. We support prioritizing repairs at high pedestrian use areas like transit corridors and iconic streets to promote economic development in retail areas. However, we have twice as much sidewalk as we have roads, and $10 million doesn't go very far, but it's a good start. The fact that we leave our damaged sidewalks after we pay out claims for a trip and fall, like the location on Vermont between Fifth and Sixth Streets where Steve Lopez of the L.A. Times took my photo in his column at the beginning of January and where he focused his attention in his column this last Sunday, is like letting a teacher who is convicted child molester to stay in their job at an elementary school. We must develop a comprehensive and thoughtful policies and programs to deal with the state of our pedestrian infrastructure: our sidewalks, crosswalks, street lighting, et cetera. We have many proposals on the table that each go partway, but they need to be coordinated. There is this program, there's Bloemenfeld's new 50-50 program he introduced the other day, Save Our Streets Bond Proposal, the Mayor's Great Streets Program, the Green Streets Program, the New Mobility Element, the Constreets Motion that was just entered in by Fuentes and Martinez, Transit Corridors Cabinet Ideas, and many others. We need to be thinking about this issue in a holistic and sustainable manner. We need to have larger visions that our sidewalks mean to our city, how they are the lifeblood of our neighborhoods, where our kids walk to school, where seniors stroll, where our merchants conduct their business, where we all shop, meet, walk our dogs, chat with our friends, celebrate our city, and more. I just want to encourage you to really think about how our sidewalks are essential. We want to support this bond measure, but we want the city to take leadership and show the residents and the business owners that we mean business, and we want our streets as an essential part of our transportation and our cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next speaker, Mel Wilson. Please come forward. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Good morning. Mel Wilson, Realtor, Southland Regional Association of Realtors.
If you don't mind holding the mic, we have listeners. Thank you.
Sure. Mel Wilson, I'm a Realtor from the Southland Regional Association of Realtors, and I want to applaud you for taking some action on remitting the sidewalk epidemic. Broken sidewalks is a safety hazard. It brings blight on the communities, and there are lots of good things that we can do. Let me just share with you, from my perspective as a property owner, as a Realtor, and as a former Metro Board member serving under Mayor Viragosa and then earlier, 15 years earlier, with Mayor Riordan, as my capacity as a Board member, I supported pedestrian uses and, I believe, over a two-year period, introduced motions at the MTA Board that were approved by our Board to fund over $15 million for pedestrian uses all throughout the region. The solution is a long-term one. One size does not fit all. And I will assure you that as a citizen, former Board member of Metro, as a co-chair of the Transit Corridor Cabinet for Mayor Viragosa, sidewalks are critically important. It's good for business. It's good for communities, good for, you know, physical health. And we believe, we Realtors and small businesses like myself, believe that working together, we can come up with some creative solutions that won't put such an overbearing burden on the private sector, and that there should be some shared costs with this solution, and we would like to work with you on those. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thanks for being here. Seeing no other speaker cards, we will invite now the city staff to come make their report on item number one. Good morning. And I ask for the record, just identify yourself as you're making your presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. Ben Sah, Assistant City Administrative Officer here, and I guess I will lead off. I have, there's representatives from the bureaus of street services, engineering, and contract administration to also help in this presentation and answer any questions you may have. But just to start off with, I think what we can start off with is just confirming your statements and those statements of the public speakers here, that this is not a comprehensive solution that we're reviewing today, but it's a good start. It's a good start because the city has not funded sidewalk repairs in several fiscal years, and mostly because of the fact that sidewalks are a general fund expense, and the general fund over the last fiscal years has experienced crisis. We've been in crisis mode, just putting out the fires where we can. And with that said, it's also been confirmed to us that this is an area of priority for the council, an area of priority for the mayor, and so we need to make it an area of priority as we begin developing the budget for next fiscal year. And in fact, in this current fiscal year that we are in, a commitment was made to begin that process with the $10 million appropriation to the unappropriated balance, which is a source of funds for this current proposed project. With that said, the city has a policy of funding 1 percent of its general fund towards capital improvement and expenditure program, which it had failed to meet up until this current fiscal year. And this $10 million in the unappropriated balance helped us finally achieve that 1 percent goal since the initiation of the policy. And in our forecast moving forward, we do assume a continuation of at least this $10 million in sidewalks for the next four years. Granted, there's still deficits that need to be solved, but at the very least, we have prioritized this amount for the next fiscal years. And as you know, there's legal issues involved with sidewalks that we have brought to the full council and to the mayor, and we hope that through that process, we will have a more comprehensive solution to sidewalks for the City of Los Angeles. And with that, more than happy to answer any questions about the specific program that is being proposed here by our office and the bureaus, and open it up to any of my colleagues here for additional input.
Thanks, Ben. Did you mention that the $10 million will be spread out over the next four fiscal years?
No, the $10 million is a current year appropriation. So the $10 million is solely is for this current fiscal year. What I said is that we have also assumed that a similar appropriation of $10 million for the next four fiscal years in our forecast.
Got you. There's some following, the following fiscal years to come. And does this $10 million need to be spent by the end of this current fiscal year?
No, it does not.
So it'll carry over.
What can be done is the funds, once the program is approved by council and the mayor, the funds would be transferred to an account where those funds can stay as the expenditures are made and paid from those in that account.
Okay. I have a few questions. You just want to introduce the rest of the panel here. John, Mr. Reamer, thanks for being here.
Good morning. John Reamer, the Inspector of Public Works, Director of Bureau Contract Administration.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ron Olive, Assistant Director of Bureau Street Services.
Good morning. Ted Allen, Acting Deputy with the Bureau of Engineering.
Thank you. I'll have a few questions, then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Sadeo. Page three of the report says that all-inclusive unit costs for, if I can direct you to page three, all-inclusive unit costs for street services average 25 to 30 percent more when addressing one location at a time versus an entire block. Now, does that $28 per square foot cost factor in that 20 to 35 percent increase?
Ron Olive again, Street Services. The, what we're trying to say here is that with our experience through the citywide general-funded sidewalk repair program and the 50-50 program that we had for four years, the 50-50 in particular, we're looking at one location at a time. So you're looking at mobilization, additional costs, you're looking at just about in every case, there was a tree or multiple trees to deal with on that one location. That, with our experience, added about 25 to 30 percent to the cost when we're doing one location at a time rather than addressing a full block or multiple blocks at a time. Economy of scale, if you will.
Got it. And does that 28 percent per square foot include indirect costs, pension, healthcare, workers' comp?
No, but it does include all of the transition work. Typically, when you're taking out a sidewalk in front of a residential property that's really been damaged severely, you're going to have to go back farther than that property to transition to driveways, to other, you know, adjacent locations that may not be per the standard we're trying to build to. There's certainly always tree work, so either we have to do a crown reduction, a heavy trimming, if you will, and root pruning, or we have to remove the trees. Certainly always, just about always sprinkler repair work because these roots have tangled into private property improvements. And so, again, this is-
So it's up to not exceed $28 per square foot?
No, that's been pretty much the average, our experience over the last several years, on what it's costing on a per-square average for all costs, direct costs, but everything included, not just removing the concrete and replacing the concrete, everything else that would be required.
What's the average rate of a private contractor would charge per square foot?
I don't know if I can answer that, but we have looked at, you know, comparable bid prices on other types of projects, but it's always remove and replace concrete only. I don't know that we've compared it with, again, like we're talking all the other elements of the work that would have to be included. So I don't know if you have any, Bureau of Engineering, have any ideas?
Okay. Because other cities across the country, they're average about $15, $16 per square foot. My only thing is, we just can't price our way out of doing business here in the City of Los Angeles, and that's a concern of all of us here. We want the bang for the buck here, looking at $10 million to fix sidewalks, and it's been an ongoing concern to me and some colleagues of mine that the pricing is just so high to get work done in the City of Los Angeles. I want you to look at that and report back to me on average costs, how we differ from the private contractor moving forward. Tell me about, Mr. Olive, if you can, the funding. Now, you're looking at sidewalk repairs. Is it connected, or can the funding be used to root pruning and tree removals as long as they're connected to sidewalks? Is that how it's working? That's what you're proposing?
Yes, you have to include those tree mitigation costs in your costs. And again, that's what I would ask on our report back. We want to be very clear that we're going to compare apples to apples because, again, we're a lot of times looking at the costs of contractors, but they're not all-inclusive. So with a contractor, again, you're going to have to pull permits, there's inspection costs.
That's fair.
There's a lot of other things involved. But to answer your last question, yes, all those things would be eligible under this $10 million.
Right. It wouldn't make sense to fix sidewalks, and then just, it's a patch job that we found across the city, that, okay, you remove the tree, that's fine and dandy, but then you put a patch job over the sidewalk. So this, we're hoping that this will include also the removal, tree pruning, the pruning of the root, tree removal, and also fixing of the complete sidewalk.
I believe that's all our understandings from this statement.
Okay. Now, in the report indicates iconic streets listed as a second funding priority. Who selects the iconic streets? And secondly, will this money be divided evenly among the council districts when selecting these streets?
Councilmember, that is up for your consideration. I think the vision here, or the idea here, was something similar to the Mayor's Great Streets Initiative, something where there's other city services connected with an iconic street, so we can create a full improvement, if you will. How those streets are selected, I don't think we necessarily meant this to be the same as the mayor's initiative, but it's kind of a similar idea. But I don't know if we would divide it up 15 ways, or if it would come from, you know, maybe a committee of staff.
So an iconic street will fall in line with the mayor's initiative of a great street? Or that's the ultimate goal?
That's possible.
It's possible.
We're not saying that that's necessarily what we're saying here, but the idea is simpler.
Very good. And then as far as the money being divided evenly among council districts, and I saw, was it 3.33 mil per council district?
That's, again, that's a one proposal.
Okay. I refer all that, I would prefer all that money come to the CD15. Are you okay with that, Mr. Sadeo? Or, oh, half, a half? Okay. CD1's well represented here.
We have two other precedents, if you will. One other, the 50-50 program we had for four years was really a first-come, first-served. There was no allocation per council district. It was restricted to residential areas only. Now I-
Yeah, explain to me, Mr. Olive, the administration of the 50-50 program. Is that on a first-come, first-served basis?
It was previously, but I haven't studied it. We haven't studied it very closely. We haven't really discussed it much with Councilman Bloemenfeld's office, but he introduced a motion earlier this week which proposed another idea for a 50-50 program, commercial areas only.
Commercial areas, right.
And maybe higher priority areas rather than a first-come, first-served. So it's really open. Again, we're looking for direction on, you know, what the council's looking for on a 50-50 program, how that should be established. But we do have, you know, experience, again, with another way to do it.
As far as creating a list of qualified contractors, how soon can the BOE come up with that list specifically for the 50-50 program?
We anticipate that we would be able to come up, at least with initial contracts, by this July, but that's somewhat dependent on how long, you know, we get, it takes for us to get the green light, but assuming it's somewhat in the next month or so. The first, but the way we're envisioning it, the first batch of contracts would be one or two low-bid contracts based on unit quantities. It wouldn't be a full on-call list because that would take a little bit longer and would be an RFQ instead of just a low bid, which is quicker. So the way we're envisioning doing it is going out with low-bid contracts based on quantities where, if we know the locations, we'll put those in. If we don't, we may bid just based on quantities and assumed conditions and say, we'll provide the locations later. Award to a low bidder, maybe break it into two contracts, two low bidders, but it wouldn't be the full on-call list that we envision in future years should the program continue. In that case, we would do an RFQ in parallel for future years where, you know, we could have awards to multiple contractors, and we've done this in our sewer program where we have unit price bidding. It's still to the lowest contractors, but it's not only the lowest, and there are certain controls. So when we would award work in batches, that would go to the one that had the lowest unit prices for that combination, but they wouldn't be able to have more than 10 active. So we have a protocol for it in the sewer program moving forward that we think would fit well.
So you'll be waiting for our action, moving this along, the process, the committee process, the council approval process as well. So we'll do everything in our part to make this work quickly. I'm just asking the BOE to do your part as well. I want to get this done this week.
Right. And we are looking, we're already moving forward, looking at how to do it and starting to put it together, but we wouldn't actually release anything onto the street unless directed to, without this, you know, actually being approved.
And explain to us the process for bidding and awarding the contracts, RFP, RFQ?
So the first year, we envisioned doing a low-bid construction contract, a competitive bid contract. For the future years, we envision it being an RFP where they would propose prices and we would select more than one and create a list.
Okay. And to Ben, from the CAO's office, you know, we have heard many times that the city's not doing its part in fixing the sidewalks. And just for the record, can you explain to us and the public how we came across this $10 million? Because we need to clarify and be upfront with people, the city, that, you know, they're going to ask, all of a sudden, you found $10 million to fix sidewalks? So we, I want to know, people here in the city, my colleagues want to know, and if you can share with us how this $10 million was accounted for and where you found it and where it came from.
Sure. So there's a number of different factors that go into a response here, and one of them is that as we started coming out of the crisis of the recession, there are revenues that started coming in a little bit higher than we had budgeted. And so, much to the credit of council and mayor, instead of just going back and, you know, hiring back up to the levels we were at when the crisis hit, prioritization started to occur. So funding for sidewalks became a priority. And as opposed to putting that $10 million into, you know, other things that maybe had gone away during that time, the $10 million was made available specifically for sidewalks. And now the reason why it was put in the unappropriated balance is because we didn't have a, we hadn't done sidewalks on a citywide basis and citywide scale in such a while that we needed, and there was different policy considerations to consider. We put in the unappropriated balance to have this discussion we're having today, where we put together with the lead of street services, engineering, and contract administration a proposal that council can consider as we kind of re-enter the sidewalk business, if you will.
Fantastic. I'm glad we're moving forward on it. We're all in line when it comes to, again, what the mayor's been saying, back to basics and providing the necessary funding to fix our streets, fix our sidewalks, and I thank you for that. Before I turn it over to Mr. Sadeo, I think we also need to find a way to find some incentive, tax incentive programs for businesses who ultimately want to improve their infrastructure. Something that I'm going to recommend in this committee. And also, Mr. Sadeo and I heard yesterday during our Gang Reduction Committee meeting of credible organizations that focus on reentry programs. Young men and women from the ages of 18 to 24 that are at risk, and the kids that are at risk as well that need job opportunities. I think we need to find a way to incorporate the importance, incorporate both reentry program, job creation program with this opportunity of fixing our sidewalks so we can put those folks that need an opportunity to get their lives back in order and provide them with a job. So, and I'll make a recommendation as we conclude today's committee meeting. With that, I thank you, and I will turn it over to Mr. Sadeo.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership. This is a very vexing problem to wrap, at least for me, my head around. There are some very important questions, I think. One is to figure out, how do we prioritize? This is, it's a lot of money, but it's also a modest sum in confronting the challenges that we have to fix our sidewalks. And so the question is, how do we prioritize? Is it need? Is it more efficiency? Is it income? Is it age? How do we map out where do seniors live? Where do disabled community live in greater numbers? So that's one question. There's a question about legal obligations. We have ADA, but then there's also the question of private property, and to what extent are we obligated? Have we assumed obligations? And is it tenable for us to maintain those obligations? So those are very important questions. Obviously, the mayor, you and I, and the council want to make sure we get the best bang for the buck. So how do we do that? Is this, is this $10 million, how do we grow this? How do we leverage this? Are there public-private partnerships? Are there other benefits if we work with at-risk youth, reentry programs that we can do freestanding? Then we get a bang of training and then of integration. We get a better cost. And so we get, not only do we meet the goal of fixing our sidewalks, but we also leverage that for some other greater goods. So those are questions that I think that we need to ask, and then we need to figure out what the answers are to that. I'm interested in hearing from you guys on these matters.
Okay. I'll try to address a few of your questions, sir. As, on your question about prioritization, I think everybody at this table, and I think we've got in enough direction from your colleagues and some of you as well, that we need to prioritize those areas where we've had claims in the past so that they don't keep kind of running the tab with the city funds for the foreseeable future. So as we describe in this report, or indicating in this report, we do want to have a portion of these funds go towards those areas where there's claims and make those fixes so that there's no future claims or mitigate those future claims as much as possible. The other two areas of prioritization that we establish are very flexible, and they're flexible because there is obviously a larger discussion with regard to sidewalks, with regard to prioritization of disabled committee members. And so we left somewhat vague prioritization for, say, for the, when we talk about heavy traffic areas. Part of the issues that I come up with the ADA lawsuit is that they would like us to focus on transit areas where people are getting on and off of buses, if you will, and other public transportation areas and commercial areas. We feel that, at the very least, the language here allows for that flexibility to continue to be there. And then on the 50-50 program as proposed here, that is very much flexible. It would come up, it would ultimately be at the discretion of the council office to determine how to spend, what would account to about $220,000 per council office in their council district. And that ultimately, as I said, would be at the discretion of, and the prioritization of those council offices. With respect to the legal obligations, that's something that, you know, we're still dealing with. The city attorney, I'm sure, would be happy to provide a closed session briefing as to what those implications are to the members. But again, we feel that this current program as proposed provides that flexibility to pivot, if you will, with regard to questions about ADA compliance and property rights and things of that nature. And then as far as how do we grow this and leverage this with public-private partnerships and job entry programs, I think that's an excellent, those are excellent ideas that would lend themselves a lot better to a more comprehensive program. There are some possibilities with this smaller program, but obviously those, the leveraging opportunities become much more available with the larger sidewalk program that we, I think, would be happy to discuss, again, as part of the closed session issues with regard to potential settlement.
Are the unions part of this conversation? Laborers, operating engineers, carpenters, there must be some trades that were tied to this. Can we get their support? I mean, you could envision- I mean, you could envision possibly, you know, the laborers have an incredible training area and a training program, so we could maybe do these as training projects, real pilots, where we say, forget training people up in, they're up around the 210, up in the Pasadena area, forget training out there and making practice sidewalks and then breaking them up and making them practice sidewalks again, let's do it in a real place where they're needed, and we don't have to break them up after we installed them. We've thought about that, right? They, I mean, they break brick up there. They just, they fix something, and then they break it down again, then they fix it again, and it's all part of their training. And we can, we could do that without breaking it up in the real places. Why don't we pull them in this conversation and then use that as part of their training program with the city? Has there been conversations or thoughts about that?
Good morning, Councilmember. John Reamer, Bureau of Contract Administration. As been stated, the more comprehensive program certainly will take into account all that you just raised. What this council has at its disposal are several ordinances that will fit nicely with the fact that we're going to be contracting much of this work out. Two that come to mind would be the Public Infrastructure Stabilization Ordinance that affirms a project labor agreement. And why do I bring that up? Because inside of a project labor agreement, what we have is a disadvantaged worker category, where we identify a number of hours that we specifically set toward individuals that fit certain criteria. We use the term "at-risk," which is one that many can relate to. Those who are ex-offenders, those who have challenges, that they're looking for a second chance, a second opportunity. Our project labor agreements state that they will work, and we've been working with our contractors to ensure that this happens, and we've been quite successful in the Department of Public Works, where we have a five-year project labor agreement, and we're halfway through it. The agreement, both the PLA and the ordinance, allows for us to add contracts. So, even though when we negotiated, we established a identified list of projects, the latitude is there for us to add projects to it, this could certainly be something that we would take into consideration to put under that. And when I've had conversations with Mr. Miller, he's certainly been open to the opportunity to have more projects on there. The reason that we want to go, and I bring up a project labor agreement, is because it has a training component through the apprenticeship program. So, it's not just local hire, which is important, but it also provides the training component that you were referring to, so that, you're absolutely correct, the apprenticeship program and the training that takes place, why wouldn't we want to use this environment that we have here, not only to improve our infrastructure from a physical standpoint, but our infrastructure from a social standpoint, as it relates to putting men and women to work? So, those are conversations that we've had lightly, but we have not gone in deep conversations until we've heard from you, as it relates to what we will have to work with. But we are hearing you loudly and clearly. It's certain that we can definitely take advantage of.
Let me just share with you, the laborers are moving, bought property, moving their headquarters in my district, lots of interest and support from the city in helping them permitting, but it seems like a real great opportunity to have that conversation with them about them moving and taking advantage of, you know, we provide them with a training opportunity in a real environment, so that we could measure their work and evaluate it, and they can train people. And we can do this, do this PLA, and we amplify it, and see if we get more bang for our buck through this. And particularly since we're using a smaller, a smaller number as compared to the challenges, that we maybe try to make pilots out of this, this smaller amount of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. If CAO's office can briefly explain why you are opting for option two out of the report, then if I could just get that explanation. As far as the implementation option, Ben, if you, it looks like the recommendation was to go with option two. I believe we talked about getting the bang for our buck on this issue and spending the $10 million as much as we can. Can you explain that?
Exactly. So, option two is a proposal that not only the CAO, but the rest of the bureaus that have signed off on this report are recommending. And that's the one that would have period of engineering do the low-bid competitive contract to establish a set of private contractors to, in essence, do the work. City staff would still do all the inspections that's required for these projects, but the actual work of the sidewalk repair for the, would be done by private contractors.
Private sector jobs through, via a project labor agreement?
Yes, okay, yes. And the reason for those is, are twofold. One is, you know, we feel that that will get us actually working much faster than having to create positions and bring people back on board that haven't been doing sidewalks in over three or four years.
Yeah, we do not want to delay progress here in fixing our sidewalks. So, we have an opportunity here to spend $10 million and move it forward and getting it done quick. We need to move.
Exactly. And the other reason is that this option still provides a flexibility to, again, like I said, pivot based on the more comprehensive, greater potential settlement agreement that would come from, as a result of the ADA lawsuit, where we could go, you know, we could still, it still allows us to, if the city decided to, go with city forces or continue down the path of contract work.
Okay. Thank you. You good? Okay, with that, thank you so much, gentlemen, for your hard work on this, and we'll do our part in moving this forward and working with Budget and Finance Committee, and ultimately to get this in front of our colleagues, so we can start fixing our sidewalks as soon as possible. Now, I'm clearly aware that there are organizations that employ at-risk youth that are already licensed to do the concrete work through our LACC, right, the Conservation Corps? Is that my understanding? And there are others that do the same. That's why I'd like to, part of my recommendation is to see a certain percentage of this contracted work go directly to these organizations, and it can also be subcontracted out, and I just want this Bureau of Street Services to figure out how we do that. So, we will move, from this committee, move the selection of option number two, the implementation plan, and adopt the recommendations contained in this joint report as the recommendations of this committee. And, Mr. Sadio, if you're okay with this, I would like to add a recommendation that 5% of the work be performed by contractors that employ at-risk youth and young adults, and add a recommendation that Bureau of Engineering report back in six months on the status of this program. And we hear oftentimes from our business community, trying to find ways to improve the infrastructure in front of their storefront, I'd like to add a recommendation that the CAO report back on the feasibility of creating a tax incentive for businesses that proactively undertake sidewalk repair. Mr. Sadio, are you okay with those recommendations?
Yeah, I hope, I hope you were satisfied with the 5%. I don't know if we want to do more. We worked in our Keep It Clean campaign with the Conservation Corps.
Right, LACC, right.
Yeah, they've done a great job with us. We heard from Homeboy Industries yesterday, another group that's working on reentry. I'm very impressed with their model, so maybe you want to say no less than 5% and allow the range?
I like that. So, no less than 5%. And then, in the coming fiscal years, we can see which route the Mayor wants to take in his budget, see if we can, part of our goal in this committee, you know, like I said yesterday in the Gang Reduction Committee, what do you think, and how does Public Works and Gang Reduction go hand in hand? Well, it truly does. Trying to put people back to work, weed them out of the gang life, and make them ultimately become productive citizens by getting away from their past. So, we're doing that here, and I thank you for your support on that, Mr. Sadio. So, with that, without objection, that'll be the order of this committee. And, Mr. Kirk, do we send this off to Budget and Finance as well?
Yes, and I believe that they'll be hearing this very soon.
On Monday?
That is what I understand.
Like, yesterday? But, okay. So, we'll nudge Chairman Kirkorian, and hoping we can get this in front of Budget and Finance and move forward on spending this $10 million quickly and wisely. So, thank you. With that, this committee is now adjourned. Have a great weekend.